It's Cheryl, we're live.
Okay, welcome back those in the audience and those on YouTube. We're in the afternoon session of June 10th. Our next agenda item is not an action item. This is a workshop, management tasks. Not sure who's, is this yours, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Brian and we'll go from there.
So ask for some time on the agenda with you and Scott here to go over the Ameritidal building now that we have, we have completed the sale. Just wanted to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page on what needs to be done before we fully take over at the end of the lease term. The, and I'm not sure, we just haven't had this conversation yet. So we wanted an opportunity to explain to you that Ameritidal has a triple net lease. So they have, have been, since they've been a tenant in the building, responsible for paying the utilities and paying for the maintenance of, of the building. Just last week, they had Schindler out to work on the, on the elevator. And so that task is, the maintenance, they maintenance guy said they were still having some troubles. So I think there might be a couple more tweaks that need to happen to get that thing fully operational. But state inspection was there. They completed that process to get it certified by the state and it's, it's operational. Arnie had some issues with the thermostat that's in his office. So he asked Scott to send his crew out there and they discovered a number of things. I think he can kind of explain to you what's going on with the HVAC system that we need to come up with a plan with, so.
Yeah, well, but what they found out was that, because the units generally 208 and they have a transformer that takes it down to 24 volt to the thermostat and the transformer is clogged. And so they had one, they put in, but it still wouldn't work. And when they got checking, there's no Freon in them. The condensing units and stuff.
And we can't use the new Freon?
Well, they think they can. They have an R22.
Good.
We'll just have to look at, at least we know on the one that the servant Arnie's in. So we need to have them come up and check them all and, and see if they all need charged. And stuff is what we need to do on that. I need to go back down also and go upstairs and plug back in the makeup air units that they shut off for the winter. Cause they're not, they don't have preheat on them. So in the winter, when it's, you know, you know, from, you know, 30 to below zero and everything, we're not bringing in that cold air and trying to reheat it. So their solutions every year they go up and unplug them, what they do or shut them off. So in the winter, there's no fresh air really coming in.
Was that like a louver system that we had to replace here?
No, what it's just, it's, it's, it's like we have, well, we have it in the three story and we have it in the jail. We call them mile one. And the, the unit up here has propane heat to preheat it in the winter. And then over in the jail, we have the boiler loop that is tied into all the heat pumps in the three story and the jail. It has, it has actually two loops in it. It has the loop from boiler and then we have what we call injury recovery loop over there. So we in the winter take heat that's being exhausted and take the heat out of that air and tie it into a set of coils. And behind it is boiler coil. So it's kind of, and in the summer we do the same thing. The cool air going back out, we run it back in and, and, and cool the air coming in. So, but that place down there does not have any preheat on it. So in the winter, when, when I did the walk there, we found them both shut off up there. And actually ones on the east end had the, had the give the point up there. You can see the louvers and then on the north end, right above where you go into the prosecutor's office, the high peak up there is another set of louvers. Those units sit on those two corners and bring up the makeup area.
So in the winter, could you add heat strips?
I think it was Thomas Shaw. I think you're able to, that you're able to, you know, add heat to them and stuff. Cause I don't think they've ever had the number of bodies in there that we plan on putting in there. And gonna want to have makeup air.
So there's, I, you know, I think there's a number of punch list items that we need to, I guess, create the list and then identify who's going to follow through on that kind of thing. The, I, I don't know what your thoughts are on the HVAC system and the Freon in those units, but that might be something that Ameritidal is responsible for. And we should ask them to look into that as a deferred maintenance thing while they're still under lease. But that's the feedback that I was looking for and is that, you know, Scott's task to do? Or how, I mean, how that's going to work?
I would assume it would be as if they don't want to do it, but.
Yeah.
To me, there's got to be a certain warranty with that, I would think.
So at least of the units that they're actually utilizing on the main floor.
Yep.
And they may not have charged the basement because nobody was using it in the past. And it probably stays fairly cool down there. But I mean, I can't imagine right now being into this and not having AC going.
Yep. Did you, did their lease transfer and hold from those folks over to us?
So we are, according to the purchase and sell agreement and the lease that was existing, we are just basically stepping into the shoes of the original owner. So there, there is no new lease. It's just an existing lease. The, they reached out last week to get a W9 from the clerk's office so they could pay, pay the rent. But probably another thing that needs to happen is a conversation about adjustments that need to be made for the, for our offices' rent. And the adjustment that needs to be made in there, in there. The maintenance, like the outside maintenance, we have, we agreed when we signed a lease, a sublease with Ameritidal to take care of the lower half. And so Nuclear Nelson's the contractor that mows the lawn and keeps the weeds down. It's, I mean, just a 30 minute, 30 minute worth of work. I, I think Alpha does the maintenance on the upper half. And it appears that the grass got hit with Roundup or something up there. Cause it's, it's, it's not looking too good. They've had, they've had the sprinklers on quite a bit. And some of us kind of greening up a little bit. But I noticed coming in, when the sprinklers are running, there's a number of them that are broken and needs to be repaired. And probably a walkthrough in that system to see what was working and what, what just needs to be adjusted. Some of those, some of those heads are hidden in the building. That's, I mean, those are easy things to do. Just need to kind of put it on a list and get, get that done.
Anything else, Major? For the HVAC, is there anything else? I mean, it's all good, is all?
Yeah, it seems to be.
What about plugs? I know one time we talked about electrical plugs. Is there enough plugs and all that stuff?
As far as I know, I, you know, I guess need to go around upstairs with a tester and plug them into them and see, you know, if they're all properly grounded and everything else. I would, I would think as new as the building is, it would be, you know.
Should be. One of the comments on the plugs is that they're in the floor, water more in the floor, especially in the center spaces. And so we're going to have to design office space around it. I think the one thing outside of the maintenance, we had just talked about doing an RFP to try and get a architect or somebody, draftsman to, you know.
Yeah, we talked about it. You were going to that meeting and we wanted you to get back before we made that decision. So we haven't made that decision yet, whether to hire Cameron and his crew or, you know, you were talking about a bid.
That was on the fairgrounds.
Oh, I thought it was, okay. I thought, yeah, okay, that's right.
Cameron on that building.
Right.
I think there's on the fairgrounds.
So I, if, if you want, I can coordinate a, a meeting with Matthew. Paul Fritz, I think Paul Fritz is the one that handles all of the building maintenance for Ameritidal properties. He's, he's out of Boise. I can call him and, and kind of loop them into this conversation. Identify, you know, we need to have a conversation about HVAC, how that's, you know, if that needs to be repaired, what's going to happen with the sprinkler system and the, and the dead grass up at the upper level. If, you know, if that's not a big deal, you guys want to convert that to, you know, zero escaping, then we should maybe communicate that to, to them so they're not.
You know, probably paying the water bill or sprinkler it now, I'm assuming.
That's a triple net, so they should be paying the water bill.
Right.
As well.
So that is accurate, the end of that lease?
Yeah, until the end of February. There, there's an option for renewal in the, in the lease. And we need to talk about expectations with that, with, with Ameritidal as well. So I, I think, I think setting something up where we can have a meeting with them. Say, here's the, here's what our expectations are and listen to what theirs are going forward and, and make sure we're communicating with them now that we are the landlord there, the tenant. So we, you know, keep the lines of communication open. But wanted to make aware of the issue with the HVAC. And, and Ameritidal was good about getting the elevator fixed. And the tree, that dead tree that was to the east of the building is, they got that cut down and, and taken care of. But yeah, a number, a number of broken sprinklers. So when that runs, the water just runs down the parking lot and that kind of stuff. Just little, little things that.
You guys did your walkthroughs, Scott? Did you look at windows as far as, none of them lost their seals, any of that stuff?
We didn't not look on that close.
They'll all be under warranty still.
What's that?
Those should all be under warranty.
Pretty old building, huh?
15 years, I don't know if they'll be any warranty.
Yeah.
It depends on the type of window. I mean, my sister just had them replaced after 25. They came in and warranted all of them, replaced all of them.
25 years?
25 years.
And then we also talked a while back about the cracks in the, in the parking lot. Are we going to try and fix those this year?
Those are where we're dealing with the, the issue, so.
We're still waiting on Toby to get back to us on what it's going to take to repair all that.
He hasn't got back to us. So he might still be busy with his own work in the fairgrounds for all I know.
We might need to put out a bid and see if there's anybody else that we can.
We're just going to try and, see, I wasn't aware we were going to deal with cracks in the parking lot. So we'd need to have someone come and do crack seal on it and then we'll do it. Or what do we want to do with it?
I think it all needs to be rebuilt because the parking lots, the drainage is the issue. And we went ahead and accepted that, you know, with that being the issue, so.
The upper one you're talking about?
Yeah, the upper one.
Without regrading it and everything?
Someone's going to have to be regraded.
That, so there's a, a storm drain, concrete around the storm drain that sits maybe five inches above the existing asphalt level. So there's been some, some sinking right around that, where that drain is. And then, and yeah, you.
I would think you just put out the.
Right.
Around it, build it up and repave it.
It didn't sound like that was an issue at all. He said, when I do this whole parking lot, he says, that'll just be fixed.
Just raise it to the, so it's flush with the, with the concrete.
Should we, should we give him like maybe a date or something so that he can give us a bid? If not, we probably should put it out and see if there's somebody else that's willing to do that.
You want to talk to him, we have a way to.
Well, we had a discussion with him over there. Is that just part of, you know, cause we were talking about the east side and the ridge there, adding additional parking. Did that include the redoing the upper one too? Or is he just talking about redoing that east side and additional parking down there?
I didn't think we talked about the upper. I think we just talked about the side and pop it all the way down, tear it all out and regrade it away from the building.
I feel like we need to go out with an RFP and let outside people look at that. That's a bigger job than I think we were anticipating there. That's going to be pretty spendy.
There was, there were supposed to be funds in escrow refunds for our, for their portion. This is Lassardi's portion of the appraisal and some other things. Did that get?
It was received.
We got, okay, good. I, I just wanted to make sure that all that went as planned. So going forward, I think inviting Matthew to a meeting. And I guess we can, we can do that as part of a Monday agenda. If you want kind of a workshop session or if, if you don't feel like it's something that you need to take time on a board meeting, then Scott and I can, can meet with them and maybe one representative from the board can attend that.
And I guess I would say if he can make it on a Monday, great. If he can't make it on a Monday, it's set it up anyway and just three of us or whatever.
Just kind of start this kind of list of things that, things that we need to get done are going to start the process of doing what, what Ameritidal will do between now and the time that they vacate the, the building. And then make sure we're talking about kind of transitioning from when they move out and we, we move in.
I think it'd be, it'd be good if we could get that whole parking lot area done, completed prior to winter hitting. Cause people start moving in in February, March, whatever.
Yeah.
Be nice to have all that.
And if you do want to do that before Ameritidal leaves, then, then we definitely want to make sure they're in the loop, they know what our schedule and plan is. So they can make adjustments for their customers if they need to.
Let's leave with them, if they can meet on a Monday agenda and we'll all talk about if we can't, we'll do a separate meeting and then figure out what they'll pay for and what they want.
I didn't read their triple net. Did you read it to see, you know, what their responsibility was like on that parking lot and stuff?
Uh, it didn't say anything specifically on the parking lot. It basically just said that Ameritidal is responsible for all maintenance. So that's.
They should be responsible for that upper parking lot too then.
Could be, yeah.
And we're going to tear it out, that's not really.
Yeah, and we're getting in modeling or redoing it. We're getting into some of those, we're getting into some of those issues where I think we need to have that conversation.
We're going to tear it out and not just fix the cracks and that's not maintenance anymore.
It'd be nice, well, it'd be nice to have, you know, whatever the recommendation is from Olson Excavation or what the appropriate fix is. Well, we do have that conversation with Ameritidal and see what their, what their plan is or what their, what they were wanting to do. But the, the former owner was, was really just kind of hands off. They kind of pushed all the responsibility to maintain, maintain the building, fix what was broken and just take care of the place onto Ameritidal. And that's what was, what was realized in their lease agreement, so.
So Brian, let's say we get to the end of that lease with Ameritidal and they have no place to go. What's the next step?
Well, they have, they have an option to renew that for another term. And we need to talk about that. If, if, when, the last conversation I had with Matthew, their plan was, and they hadn't signed a contract yet, but they were working on it, was to have their new office constructed and ready to move in by February. Seemed like that was kind of an aggressive timeline to get all that done. And you all know how that works with construction. There's always unforeseen issues, so.
And as we move people out of here, down to there, we could offer them a temporary space in the courthouse.
Right, I, I guess what I'm saying is I, their plan is to be, to be out of there by the end of February. That's what they communicated to us. But I wouldn't be surprised if, if come February that there's, there's still a few things left to do. So we need to have that conversation. We need to have a plan and understanding on what, what our expectation is moving into the new, into the new building and what we expect from them as tenants.
They're not talking about building a building the size of that either. They're talking about just a little office for these guys.
Yeah, from what I understood, you know, I don't know what exactly their, their square footage is, but yeah, they were working with the builder and, and an owner of the building. I, that's what my understanding was, is that we're just going to be tenants again, but it was going to be built to suit for their purposes. And I haven't heard how all that's progressing, so.
My expectation that they are done when their lease is done, so they better hurry up.
I know, I know you're anxious to.
And we need to make sure that we emphasize that, that when the lease is up, you're going to have to go.
There's got to be a moving truck sitting there.
Sitting here.
Okay, anything else on that, this?
So.
Did you ever, I'm sorry.
Do we want to try and do an RFP to see, you know, or, I mean, Toby is not exactly responsive. So I don't.
What an RFP would lock, he meant he would be allowed to bid on it of course, but it would lock in that date.
Or he may not request it, you know, if he's got the arena and other things and other projects, you know.
I really don't see it happening until next year.
What's that?
That whole parking lot, all that. They might decide to come in and do a two inch overlay and.
Yeah. So yeah, we, you know, kind of got to decide what, what we're going to request in the RFP. You know, we, are we going to pull up the existing asphalt? Are we going to overlay it and then, and then tie it into his proposal of taking east out there and putting parking spots along it and then tying it down around.
How are they going to fix the drain?
Yeah.
That's pretty important to me.
That's, that was part of tearing out the whole parking lot and just let it get drained away from the building, so it doesn't come in police office.
I think the parking lot's a big deal that we need to figure out the pathway forward on that. We can redo like the front, that front patio needs to be redone too, because those bricks are, are starting to push up. So we either need to do stamped concrete out there and just get rid of the bricks or do something different out on that front portico. But I think the parking lot, we need to figure out if it's this year or next year and who has time to do it.
Yeah, that we know it's going to be, yeah, those bricks are, it's pretty uneven walking space. And it's kind of a trip and fall hazard when it gets.
And then don't, doesn't your, Brian, down your guys' office, doesn't that slope towards your door too?
Um.
You have water pond.
Yeah, the drain, it, it doesn't, it doesn't pond up around the door, but it definitely ponds up in the parking lot right there through the entrance towards the door.
That walk that goes in.
And that, and that is a real problem when it's cold and it freezes. It's, I mean, it is a sheet of ice right there. So that, that needs to slope and drain towards the drain a little better.
Yeah, it needs to be sloped away, because it all kind of comes right to that point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By the time you put in the ice melt and then all the stuff on it to make it safe, then it all gets tracked in the building and everything. And the best thing we, we, you know, is we go get the road sand, you know? Cause the ice melts away and then there's, you got water on top of the ice. But we've been getting, I got loads of the, of the road sand. So the, it's got the salt in it, it does melt some, but then there's still some grit. So if someone does step on it, then that tracks really bad. That's the only problem. But I'd rather have it tracked than have someone get their head cracked over that.
I guess too, while you're in the budget setting process, be thinking about janitorial for that whole building when February rolls around. I mean, obviously we don't need it now, but when February comes, the.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's part of the planning. Okay, try, we're in the process of trying to create our own janitorial staff here.
Got you.
Their county employees accountable to us. We still have a lot of the old parts, equipment. We just need people and products for them to use.
We know who cleans that building now?
I don't know who does the upstairs. We do our own down.
Cause that might be a contact there to start with. Maybe they'd be interested in doing not only that, but the courthouse too. I don't know, just throwing out my bill.
Talk to them.
I'm almost bet the girls upstairs do the upstairs too.
Yeah, cause there's what, there's two of them there basically.
Three, three.
So if you, if you're prioritizing, I think, you know, landscaping, Ameritidal needs to continue what they're doing. We'll continue with what, what our, what we're doing, but the parking lot needs to be resolved. And Scott, if you would take that one.
Okay. Okay, good. Thanks for your time and feedback.
Okay, we're going to move on down the agenda. Next agenda item is a public hearing for vacation 24-02. Send it come on up. This is for Harris vacation of a utility easement. And I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and ask if anyone has any ex parte or conflict of interest. I do not.
Do not, sorry, I was reading.
And I do not either. So we will go to a staff report. Oh yeah, good job. Got it?
Not very well.
Too much stuff here. Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Well, they, they made it so those don't go down there anymore.
Cause I was listening to the meeting last week and whoever was sitting here, it's hard, was breaking up.
Oh. I'm going to have to take Doug's over there and send it.
I don't see enough work.
No, they changed that.
Way that all works.
Everything is different.
Split it off for multiple mics, I think. Well, I'll just point towards me and help it picks up.
What about those mics over there? Hey, this is all way too short, so.
Won't work anymore.
Okay, if I get down, you guys might have something else.
I'll leave that one going watered up down here. Did you pull it again?
That was me. That one.
Okay, this one is yours, Al. This is the one we need some more slack on. Do we pull on it real hard?
No.
It's the technical things that piss us off every time.
Need a knife?
Nope.
How'd you make it through with a knife?
He has a badge. He's been trained on it.
That's part of the chairman's job. Okay, where's this one? This is the one I need. Or this one, I don't care. I'll take either one.
Okay, take this one. Okay, that's what you get. Is that enough?
Yeah, we'll make it enough.
Yes, it is, thank you. Perfect.
Need some help there, old man?
Oh yeah.
Get stuff following you back.
And now we're going to have the next.
Have a work with Scott clean.
One, two, three, go. Oh, that's not what I wanted, sorry.
I think Aster said he'll be here around August to redo this thing.
Have to always extend further.
I got that change too. Yep, yep, yep.
Mr. Clerk, can I get the screen please?
Man, I'm Mr. IT today.
You'll probably go home and rewire your whole house now.
No, yeah, yeah. Get my grandson to do that. They're in your money now. Good to see you back. So you go down to the Sun Belt for the winter? Oh yeah. Oh good. So it's your first winter, go down there, huh?
Where did you go? Where did you go?
Um, what's he doing? My daughter's there, yeah, it's, it's snowing.
I thought you were bringing some more exciting like Arizona or, you know?
That is hot, you are correct.
This one's coming in our packet, Cinda, do you just send this one separately?
This one I sent through the clerk's office.
That's in our packet here.
I think this one's going to take a few minutes.
It'll turn you great faster.
I'm working on it. Can you, uh, turn on the screen too, please?
Let's turn it on.
I don't know, Mr. IT.
He came and fixed it last week, now it works not.
Oh, I probably don't have the one cord, HDMI cord. Looks like it's not moving up. They take our HDMI cord?
No power, Scotty.
Thank you.
Uh, we got that here, and then.
Mr. IT in there, ain't ya?
We're, we're getting there.
We're no rush.
Hmm.
Okay, the staff report for vacation twenty-four oh-two Harris vacation of utility easement. Yowkins are Michael Harris and Peppin Corso Harris. The property is addressed at one forty-two and one forty-four Casey Lane in Lake Cascade Ranch subdivision lots ten and eleven. Lake Cascade Ranch subdivision was recorded on June eleventh, nineteen seventy-three. For the plat, there's a twelve-foot utility easement centered on all interior lot lines. Mike Harris and Peppin Corso Harris requesting the vacation of the twelve-foot utility easement that is centered on the lot line that separates Lake Cascade Ranch subdivisions lots ten and eleven. The applicants are requesting this vacation in order to combine the lots and build over the easement. The site is addressed, I already told you that, the site is accessed from Casey Lane of a public road. So it's these two lots right here. This is the utility easement will be vacated along here. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval on April eleventh, twenty twenty-four. At a properly noted public hearing on March fourteenth, um, it was recommended unanimously. Oh, actually, uh, March twenty-fourth, um, the applicant did not, uh, was not present. So it was tabled to April eleventh and the Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the vacation. Attached were your facts and conclusions. Legal notice was posted appropriately in the Star News to neighbors and on-site. Agency comments received. Mike Reno with Central District Health stated Central District Health has no objections to the proposal. Laura Lacy, Idaho Power Associate Real Estate Specialist, stated the records indicate that there are no Idaho Power company facilities within the road right of way area. Thus Idaho Power can support the proposed vacation. Just Ellis, Donley Fire Marshal, has no comments. Public comments received. George Narivek Karlock, owners of one thirty-seven and one thirty-nine Casey Lane are in favor of the proposed vacation. Listed different portions of the Valley County ordinance for your review. I do have some questions or comments. The sites within the Donley Fire District and the Northlake Recreational Sewer and Water District. It's not within a HURT district. The Planning and Zoning Commission determined that future development of the neighborhood will not be inhibited by the vacation. If approved, the Board of County Commissioners would sign a resolution for a declaration of vacation. And if approved, a copy of the resolution will, would be sent to Laura Lacy with Idaho Power. The condition of approval would be that Idaho Power releases the easement. All right, and then I listed a recommended motion if you approve it or one if you deny it.
Cinda, is the power to that lot to the north, one seven four three, does that come in off of West Roseberry?
Yeah, the, West Roseberry is right here.
Yeah. So that's where the power comes, so we're not going to take anything away from that lot.
Yeah, I, yeah, Idaho Power said that there's nothing that they need going through here.
All right. Any questions for staff?
Well, and then to continue.
Sorry.
Um, I also submitted to you resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirteen. This is the declaration of vacation of the plotted utility easement. That'll be recorded and that's what actually causes it to be vacated.
So Cinda, since.
And I'll need a notary if you approve this.
Since P and Z approved it, why is it coming to us?
Because it's a vacation. P and Z Commission recommend, recommends decisions on vacations, variances and planned unit development.
Okay, so that has to come to us then?
It has to come to you, okay.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Hold the motion again, I just lost. Well, this is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, not yet.
Sorry, was taking away your right to.
It's okay. So I guess during the planning and zoning hearing, there was no one opposed or a proponent, nobody showed up. And P and Z has recommended full approval. So if there's no more questions for Cinda, I'll open up the public hearing and ask if there's anyone that is a proponent of this that wishes to speak. Hey, come to the mic, state your name, please, for the record.
Peppin Corso Harris, and we're living in Cascade right now. Uh, Cinda basically said everything. The only thing was that I, of course, reading this again, um, under staff questions and comments, it says number four. Last sentence, a condition of approval would be that the Idaho Power releases the easement. So I looked at Laura Lacy's letter and she says, um, Idaho Power agrees to relinquish our interest. Then she looked at it again and she said, oh, this is just a plat note. We don't even have to say anything. She said, this is considered a placid easement. We don't have any rights. We never gave it, so I don't think you're going to get anything else from her.
That's fine, if we don't receive anything, it's just covered.
Yep, that's it. I've, you've read my summary and Cinda covered everything.
All righty, thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience, or as a proponent? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that's undecided? Please let, let the record show there was none. Any, in the audience that is opposed to this? Please let the record show that there was none of that at this time. Being no proponents or opponents, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and we will take your motion now.
I don't see any issues with this at all, so.
I would move to approve vacation application VAC twenty-four dash oh-two Harris vacation of utility easement and accept the planning and zoning commission facts and conclusions as our own. And I would move to approve resolution number twenty-four dash thirteen declaration of vacation of a utility easement.
Second, a motion and a second to vacate the utility easement in this application. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Oh, you even used it on that.
You ready?
Yep.
I'm just going to let Gabby punch it, but you know, I didn't think I should do that in a public room.
Just doing your exercise today. You just want to take that.
Okay, Cinda, good job. Thank you very much. So Doug, if I'm reading this right, our public hearing doesn't start till two. So let's go mute and we'll see everyone back here at two o'clock for a public hearing on McGregor Townsite.